Where's that old hammer? Thinkland, thinkland and Bucita. But you read like another one that was about.
Oh, that's not quite, is it?
All right, here we go. Enough of that. Looks like we're ready, Jennifer. Okay, great. Well, good evening, everybody. This is a great night for us with some recognitions that we're going to do. This is the city council meeting for the City of Edina, Minnesota. We are in the city hall chambers, council chambers. It is Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, Setnamai, for all of you Norwegians in the audience. Little after 7:00 p.m. Before we call the meeting to order, we are doing things in a virtual world as well as live. We may have people watching on cable TV or on edinamn.gov live meetings or on Facebook. If you want to participate in community comment tonight, this is the only chance you'll have to participate in a city council meeting if you are remote and watching us is you need to call 800-374-0221. Number's on the screen now, 800-374-0221. Conference ID 6332259. That'll get you into the operator and give the operator your name, your street address, and your telephone number, as Director Benarott talked about before. Press star one on your telephone keypad when you'd like to get in the queue to speak, and Director Benarott will bring you into the council chambers to speak to the council. So having provided that information before we call the meeting to order, I'm now going to call the meeting to order of the Edina City Council and ask our Clerk Sharon Allison for roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Mayor Hublin.
Here.
Next matter is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. We've got a meeting agenda that's been published to the general public and is in front of our council members. Is there anyone on the council or staff that wishes to modify the meeting agenda in any form or fashion? Not hearing anything, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as shown?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Pierce to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carried. Now, it is time for community comment. It's coming right up on the agenda here. So again, that number is 800-374-0221. Conference ID, you can see it on the screen, 6332259, 6332259. You can go ahead and call in. Remember, remember to give the operator your name, street address, and telephone number. Press star one on the telephone keypad, and that'll bring you to Director Benarott, and she'll bring you in to speak to the council. First of all, before we get to anybody that's calling in virtually, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda tonight or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing? And I give that same sort of information for those that are waiting online. You can speak to us about anything that's not on the agenda tonight or scheduled for a future public hearing. Seeing no one coming forward, Director Benarott, do we have anybody in the queue?
I do have someone on the line, but he's not yet showing a desire to speak. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak, please press star or the asterisk symbol, then the number one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, not the pound sign or hashtag symbol. That will get you in the queue to speak. There is a slight delay with the broadcast, so I would recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on. My clock shows that it's 7:06, so I will come back to you at 7:07 or when I have a speaker, whichever is first.
All right, thank you, Director Benarott.
It is now 7:07, and I still don't have anyone in the queue, so I think it's safe for you to move forward with your agenda.
Yep, this is unusual for us not to have somebody with a concern they want to address with the council. Our usual practice is that when we have had people express concerns in a prior meeting, the immediately prior meeting, we have our city manager address those concerns in the subsequent meeting and so on. Turned out to Scott Neal to address some matters that came up, I think, at the last city council meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one speaker at our previous council meeting, and she's talked about an interest in the city's tree protection, tree preservation ordinance. And it was a timely question because what she didn't realize is that we have, I think, four different boards and commissions actually working together on an effort to produce a new set of proposed tree preservation and protection ordinances for the city. So that effort is going on right now. It'll work its way to you sometime in summer, probably late summer, actually, by this time. So I think we'll be responsive to her concerns.
Good. Thank you, Manager Neal. Anything from council members as a result of Manager Neal's comments? All right. Let's move on then to the consent agenda. We usually adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion unless there's a council member that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Jackson, to approve the consent agenda in a single motion. The items on the consent agenda, any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the items on the consent agenda in single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. And now we are going on to, I think, the heart of the meeting this evening. We've got several different special recognitions and presentations that we're going to make. And the first one, our chief, Todd Milburn, along with the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, is going to present what we call the Mike Sotary Officer of the Year Award. Mike Sotary, you may recall, was a former police chief for the city, was here many, many years. And I'm going to turn it over now to Chief Milburn. And we've got a great group of folks gathered in the chambers this evening to celebrate this particular person. So Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Chief Milburn here with the Edina Police Department. And you're right, tonight is a very special night for us. Tonight's night that we get to recognize our 2021 Officer of the Year and celebrate the successes that this officer has enjoyed here and share that with her and her family. So a little bit of background about this award, just to fill everyone in. So for more than 45 years, the Edina Crime Prevention Fund has supported and provided funds to the police department as a community partner. The Crime Prevention Fund has presented an award called the Mike Sotary Officer of the Year Award annually since 2011. This was to recognize exceptional officers deserving of special recognition. The award is named after Mike Sotary, who served as police chief from 1999 to 2009 and during his 31 tenure with the Edina Police Department. Annually since 2011, the Edina Crime Prevention Fund has presented this award, recognizing officers who have gone above and beyond the call of duty on the job. Nominations are made by staff and community members for officers who demonstrate exceptional service. I'd like to thank the Edina Crime Prevention Fund for their support in making this award possible. If I could have Emily Jepson stand up here next to me, please. The 12th recipient of the Officer of the Year Award is Emily Jepson. Emily started her career with the Edina Police Department as a CSO in November 2014. After she became post-certified, Edina was quick to hire her as a police officer in 2015. Emily is making a positive impact on Edina citizens and is involved in the police department's commitment to employee wellness. Emily is in the Pierce Support Assistant Team Leader role, which is dedicated to wellness of officers and staff during difficult personal or work-related incidents. Emily is the first to seek out and undertake an intensive 40-hour peer counseling course. Knowing that mental health has a stigma attached to it, especially in law enforcement, she worked hard to make the peer support team and employee assistance program resources easily accessible to all employees in the organization. She helped to vet therapists that are occupationally competent, eliminating the hurdle to take to talk to somebody who doesn't understand the unique aspects of working in law enforcement. Emily also put together a quick help guide for utilization for cities, for the city's assistant and place assistance program as well. Another example of Emily's dedication is when she takes time to connect with specific members of the Edina community who have mental health challenges. She makes herself available to not only work with the individual, but strives to find long-term solutions for their mental health. Emily has worked hard to integrate our social worker into the police department to assure mental health needs of the department and the community at large. Emily has received numerous written compliments from citizens due to their interaction with her. She has spent many hours outside of her regularly scheduled shifts handling commitments to the community here in the city of Edina. During the height of the COVID outbreak, Emily took upon herself to obtain funding for essential food supplies for the community members who were unable to leave their homes. Her efforts provided officers with temporary resources for those in need until other resources and services were available to step in and help. Emily was awarded the 2021 IQS Leadership Award for Service. IQS stands for integrity, quality, and service. Emily embodies all of those qualities. Emily is also a field training officer, where she helps train our newest officers. Other roles that she fills with our organization are the junior police coordinator, a defensive tactic instructor, a neighborhood engagement officer, a crisis team intervention member, a crisis negotiator, a crime prevention fund fall into the arts committee member, and of course, most recently, she is our new community engagement officer. Emily's professionalism, dedication to her community, and her care for her coworkers makes her a standout for this award. Please join me in congratulating Emily as our 2021 Mike Sotary Officer of the Year recipient. Emily has a couple of words that she would like to say, and I'll turn it over to Emily.
I jokingly told the chief earlier this week that I was probably going to have to have my son on my hip as I did this, because it's way past his bedtime, but he's doing awesome. So thank you for having us here. I really appreciate it. I first need to thank my husband, Ben, because without him, none of this would be possible. He's never complained about my late arrivals home and his surprise single parenting nights. I apologize, and he shrugs it off as part of the job. Ben has been a consistent believer in me and my career. He pushes me to be better and tells me to suck it up when I need it. I love you. I also need to thank my parents. They are hardworking people who take pride in taking care of others. The idea of treating others with dignity and respect is seared into my mind because of them. I'm lucky to call you mom and dad. I would also like to thank my peers. I entered this career without any law enforcement role models. I remember my first week on Fighting Night Shift A, questioning whether I would fit in, especially with the amazing set of people I was going to work with. We had a shift meeting to set expectations and goals for the year. So those who know me know that I wear my heart on my sleeve. So of course, I had to confess my inexperience to the group. Those seven officers, along with my field trainers, taught me everything I know about good police work. They embraced me, my talents and abilities, and helped me hone my skill. The result was quality of police work, serving this community beyond just law enforcement. The Mike Sotary Award has been awarded to three other members of Fighting Night Shift A, just to give you some perspective. Most of all, I want to thank those who are standing along the back wall, poised to answer a call, walk into the unknown problem, and fix it to the best of their ability. As cops, we are the only 24/7 government representatives, and we are tasked with responding to systemic failures in our society. We are called to fix drug abuse, the drug abuse epidemic, a broken healthcare system, violence against others, child neglect. Cops are a special group of people who are willing to try, if only briefly, to alleviate the suffering of strangers in those situations. Statistically, the average American will likely experience two to three traumatic experiences in their lifetime. In a cop's career, it's more likely above 150. We guide people through those traumas, sometimes taking some of the burden from them. And then we go to the next call for service. Day after day, year after year, those people standing in the back have done this and will continue to do so with the utmost professionalism. People look at me funny when I say that copping is the best job in the world, especially in 2022. Sometimes I question it myself, but it really is. I am privileged to be invited into residents' homes, witness incredible vulnerability, bravery, and care. I get to do something new every day, and sometimes I feel like I make a difference. Being a cop is important. Cops are important. I am humbled to serve alongside these men and women, and I strive to earn my place among them. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. You make us all proud. And you can tell from the people gathered in this room that there's a lot of folks that care about you. You've been an exemplary officer and a human being, so thanks for being part of the Edina team. Really appreciate it. Thank you. And maybe see you in the morning when we do the flag raising, and we're going to talk about that in a moment here. The next thing, I'm going to take this out of order, is a proclamation regarding National Police Week, which is this particular week, 15 through the 21st, 2022. Whereas the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, is National Police Week in the United States. And whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Edina Police Department. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 17,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas 220, 220 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Memorial this spring. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty was honored during the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Fund's 34th Annual Candlelight Vigil held on May 13, 2022. And whereas the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 15 through the 21st. And whereas May 15 is designated as police officers, as peace officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff on that day. And now, therefore, the city council of the City of Edina, Minnesota hereby proclaims May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as National Police Week in the City of Edina. It calls upon the people of Edina to observe this week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep the residents and the city of Edina safe. Is there a motion to adopt a proclamation on National Police Week?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Staunton, to adopt a proclamation I have just read regarding National Police Week. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carried. Chief, anything further that you want to add with regard to events this week and specifically what we have going on tomorrow morning? Folks might be interested.
Sure, Mayor, thank you. Mayor and council, thank you for the proclamation. We do appreciate it. Just a couple of quick comments here I'd like to convey. And again, I'm Chief Milburn, I'm back again, one more time. Police Week for us in the police world means something different to every officer and their families. This year, we have had 58 line-of-duty deaths, and it's a sobering reminder of the ultimate sacrifices these officers made for our communities. This year, two of our officers stood guard at the Minnesota Peace Officers Memorial at the state Capitol grounds on May 14 through the 15th. These officers stood in silent vigil at the Police Officers Memorial to remember and honor all officers who have died in the line of duty, including the 297 Minnesota officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. It is important to remember that these fallen officers, remember that we remember these fallen officers as someone's child, brother, sister, mother, or father. Our officers are human, and they face a unique and challenging time in our history. We want you to know that we will continue to respond to these challenges with compassion, integrity, and care for the community. We are fortunate to work in a great community that supports our officers and their efforts. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, for us to be here tonight, and we appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Let's all give Emily one more standing ovation, recognize the officers that have lost their lives during this year, and celebrate our officers that are with us this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And for those in the audience, if you want to come down and see a very beautifully done ceremony, about 9:00 tomorrow morning, between 8:30 and 9:00, be here, we'll have a flag-raising ceremony with our police department. And it's a solemn but important and really a wonderful morning to be involved and to celebrate the officers that serve us so well. Let's move on now to the next proclamation, which is National Public Works Week. And we've got Brian Olson, our Director of Public Works, here to accept the proclamation. So folks, if you wanted to, if you need to leave and go back to work, I don't know who's looking out after the City of Edina with everybody here, but... Well, maybe chase you back to work. All right. I'm going to have Director Olson come up as I'm reading this proclamation regarding National Public Works Week, and it overlaps with the proclamation we just read with National Police Week. National Public Works Week, May 15 through the 21st, 2022. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, and streets. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, the city council of the City of Edina does hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the City of Edina, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions that public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Is there a motion to adopt the National Public Works Week proclamation?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Staunton, to adopt the National Public Works Week proclamation. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, carried. Director Olson, thanks for being with us this evening, and you've got some exciting things going on this weekend as well.
We do, we do. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thanks for reading and approving that proclamation. The American Public Works Association is proud to announce Ready and Resilient as this year's theme for National Public Works Week. It showcases the heroes that lie within each and every public works and engineering department across the nation, always ready to serve their communities and resilient in their abilities to pick themselves up off the ground after encountering extreme challenges. We value this community and the role that public works and engineering professionals play in keeping it safe and functioning smoothly. For the last 62 years, National Public Works Week is designed to increase public awareness for their contributions and enlighten the public about the duties, practices, and goals of the public works and engineering professionals. Every year comes with challenges, and last year was no exception, with whether it was wading through the water to fix a water main break that occurred at 2:00 a.m. in 20 below zero weather, or simply the challenges associated with delivering services during the pandemic, or managing the communications with the communications department surrounding the most severe drought we've experienced in the last 20 years. Our public works and engineering professionals stood up to the challenge. This Thursday, we are celebrating this effort by hosting our biannual open house from 4 to 7:00. We hope that you and the rest of the community will come and visit us at the Public Works and Park Maintenance Facility at 7450 Metro Boulevard to see the equipment in the facility that allows us to do our jobs. So thank you for reading and approving the proclamation and declaring the 15 through the 21st National Public Works Week.
Thank you, Director Olson. Anybody have a question or comment for Director Olson? Member Jackson?
I want to say thank you. When we get complaints from people, you guys are on it immediately, and it's part of what keeps us safe, and I'm always so impressed with the responsiveness and professionalism of you and your department. So thank you.
Thank you.
It doesn't seem, yeah. It doesn't seem like it matters what the responsibility is, as Member Jackson says, that you have in your area. But there's a special shout-out, I think it's necessary, to be able to tell folks in our community that you're in, you're out, under your direction. We are number one in the country in snow plowing. And I know that's to the chagrin of kids in our town that don't really want to go to school when it's snowing hard outside. But nonetheless, you've done a marvelous job of keeping our streets open, much to the envy of our big neighbor to the northeast, Minneapolis, so... Oh, he couldn't pass up this opportunity. Here he comes.
I can't pass that up. It's really not me. It's the guys that are doing the plowing. They are dedicated to providing great public service, and they are really good at what they do.
Thanks, Director Olson.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll see you Thursday. And then the next proclamation this evening is dealing with Emergency Medical Services Week, also overlapping with the two prior proclamations, May 21, May 15 through 21, 2022, Emergency Medical Services Week. And Chief Andrew Slama is with us this evening from our fire department to accept this proclamation. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, members of council.
All right, I'm going to read the proclamation, then we're going to get a few comments from the chief. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses... officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and others out of the hospital medical care providers' service. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Edina does hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Edina with the theme EMS Strong: Rising to the Challenge. Is there a motion to adopt a proclamation as stated?
Still moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adopt a proclamation involving Emergency Medical Services Week. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, members of the council. I appreciate it and honored to share this proclamation with our partners in police and public works, and I appreciate you saving the best for last. EMS, the theme this year, EMS Rising to the Challenge, the theme is particularly meaningful now, to remind people that every day we are faced with so many new challenges in our lives, and yet, we still rise above them. We continue to respond, support, and care for the needs of our communities. We send our best wishes for the constant safety and good health of all EMS personnel on the first lines who continue to take care of our community and communities that surround us. I want to give special thanks to our first responders in the police department, our dispatchers, our paramedic firefighters here in the City of Edina. I think we have a special place that really take pride in taking care of their residents, that's seen in the good IQS, high-quality service, that's seen in our statistics as we double those of our neighbors in cardiac arrest survival, and truly take pride in serving our residents each and every day. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chief. Anything for the chief, council members? All right, very good, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the State of Sustainability 2022. We had this report, no, we started, I think, last year with Grace Hancock, our Sustainability Manager, giving us an update on the state of sustainability, and she's gonna do that for 2022 as well. Manager Hancock, welcome.
Thank you. Communications is integral to state of sustainability, so. Good evening, council members, good evening, Mayor. Thank you again for having me tonight for a short update on the state of sustainability initiatives in Edina. Ahead of this presentation, you received a summary report on the city's Conservation and Sustainability Fund 2021 financial position, and a report on Edina's 2021 Efficient Building Benchmarking results. During our time tonight, I'd like to contextualize these two elements into Edina's broader commitment to sustainability. I'll set the stage using Edina's new 2030 and 2050 climate action goals, introduce a framework for us to achieve these goals, and speak to specific program highlights from 2021 and next steps. First, since you received the last state of sustainability a year ago, the city has passed its first climate action plan. This plan has both a vision of a resilient future and a detailed pathway to realize that future. With the climate action plan, the city set new greenhouse gas emission goals to reduce earth-warming gases like carbon dioxide and methane 45% by 2030, based on a 2019 emissions inventory for Edina. Long-term, the city endeavors to offset any lingering emission production with emission-reducing activities to become a net-zero community by 2050. These goals align the city with the 2015 Paris Agreement, endeavoring to keep climate warming below 1.5 degrees Celsius. From 2013 to 2019, the city reduced its emissions 1.5%, so the work ahead of us is big, but it's doable. These are our goals, and next I'll lay out how we can achieve them. As I said, you received two reports tonight related to the Conservation and Sustainability Fund. One of them asked you to consider a change in policy to allow for direct financial community climate action support. The CAS Fund kicked off at the start of 2016 and has since supported municipal energy management projects, which I'll discuss soon. But the Climate Action Plan outlines that of all the greenhouse gases generated in Edina, less than 2% is related to municipal operations. This means that 98% of Edina's impact on the planet goes beyond city buildings and vehicles. By allowing a cost-share program with community members, council opens a path to move more resources to affect that 98%, leveraging existing city programs and outside financial incentives to increase energy efficiency and the transition to renewable energy sources. I'm excited about this change, and I look forward to reporting back to you in a year on progress. The CAS Fund is part of a foundation of resources to achieve climate action goals. With the Climate Action Plan itself and with continued city leadership, the Sustainability Division aims to increase awareness of environmental challenges and opportunities, community activation and participation in the CAP, and accountability with the community on progress. Going forward, you'll see a systematic communication message around sustainability, regular opportunities for community members to take small and large actions that make a difference, and both passive and interactive accountability platforms, like tonight's report and like our biannual greenhouse gas inventory, to share progress, answer questions, and address challenges. So let's dive into this accountability report. I'm going to talk through each climate action section, highlight 2021 achievements, and mention key 2022 actions. This table, which you'll see repeated as we go through each climate action section, shows the climate action strategies for a particular theme, the 2021 highlights, and where staff is focusing in 2022. The rows highlighted in green are where I'll talk in detail, so feel free to focus there. Building energy makes up more than half of Edina's greenhouse gas emissions and is the largest contributor to climate change locally. Around 25% of the Climate Action Plan is dedicated to building energy needs. When it comes to buildings, city efforts focus on three things: reducing the amount of energy building needs, electrifying energy to move away from non-renewable sources like natural gas, and accelerating the transition to renewable energy like solar and wind in the electricity grid. In 2021, council passed the Sustainable Buildings Policy, which took effect just last month, and we expect will affect roughly 2/3 of the large development projects that are proposed here in Edina. Within city operations, the CAS Fund supported energy efficiency projects at two of our less-efficient properties, updated most park and utility buildings to cut down on energy waste, and developed an energy management study for City Hall. This study informs a $1 million investment this year to reduce City Hall's energy needs by an expected 40%. This year, we're also scoping a replacement rooftop solar array at City Hall to source more of its energy from renewables. Of note, the city is also starting to decarbonize and move away from the use of natural gas through electric and heat pump water heater pilots at City Hall last year and Public Works this year. A couple notes on city-owned building energy use. The city subscribes to community solar gardens for about 1/3 of its energy needs. These subscriptions not only build demand for renewable energy, but they provide financial credits to city enterprises in excess of their electricity bills. In 2021, $200,000 was credited back to enterprises for their solar subscriptions to offset utility costs. City building efficiency has improved. In the last decade, the city has decreased its energy use per square foot by 20%. Of course, when new buildings are added, this increases the total amount of energy use. This means that electrification and onsite renewable energy generation is essential to maintaining and even increasing the city's level of service to the community while still meeting our climate goals. And finally, when it comes to community building energy, we have many programs in the works, and I hope to show some emission reduction progress with our next greenhouse gas inventory. In past years, Edina has focused on energy efficiency by offering residents a home energy squad visit and requiring businesses to get familiar with their building energy use through benchmarking. This year, the Sustainability Division builds on this foundation by phasing in energy assessments for large buildings that can most use them, offering education and action events for community members interested in at-home solar or utility rebates, and by implementing the Sustainable Building Policy. Of note, Edina is also part of an electrification cohort here in the Twin Cities to learn and strategize with other metro areas nationwide about the needs and opportunities to move away from natural gas. We're seeing a lot of growth this year in building energy programs. Community awareness and the ability to knit these programs together through streamlined city resources is key to success. Second to building is emissions from transportation, vehicle tailpipe emissions from gas and diesel-powered engines. Roughly 40% of Edina's greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation within our borders. Climate action strategies related to sustainable transportation relies on making it easy for people to travel using community mobility methods: shared sidewalks, shared bike lanes, and shared bus routes. Where individual vehicles are needed, we must electrify. Within city operations, individual vehicles are needed for city services. In 2021, sustainability formalized an internal green fleet policy, which lays out goals to electrify city fleet and equipment, along with a process to get us there. You might be familiar with this after reviewing vehicle purchase requests in the last year. The CAS Fund supported electric vehicle purchases and installations at two liquor stores this year to support the liquor delivery program, along with EV chargers for the public works garage as more city vehicles electrify. This year, the city is adding more EV chargers to meet our needs and looks to an equal distribution citywide. All city-owned chargers in public places, not including fleet garages, are open to the public and to the fleet, so everyone benefits. The Climate Action Plan tasks the city to electrify all light-duty vehicles by 2030 and all medium and heavy-duty items by 2040. Last year, city staff started using an internal dashboard to track fuel use metrics for vehicles and equipment. You can see a snapshot here for 2021. Similar to building energy use, the city's fuel use efficiency has improved by more than 1/3 in the last decade. That's good news. But overall, fuel use continues to increase. In the last five years, city fuel use has increased 16%, and miles traveled has increased by 200,000 miles annually. The message here is the same as with buildings: to maintain the city's level of service and achieve climate goals, we must electrify. Beyond buildings and transportation, which make up 96% of the city's climate impact and about 1/3 of the climate actions in the CAP, are strategies related to natural and human systems. In natural systems, we have strategies around waste management, water resources, and trees and green space. In 2021, the city recycled 2.5 million pounds of organics. Organics recycling reduces our reliance on landfills, which emit methane gas. It results in compost, which can be used in place of fertilizer across the city of Edina, reducing our reliance on the limited supply of phosphorus and providing a non-toxic alternative to chemical treatments. The compost can be used as a soil amendment to strengthen trees, pollinator habitat, and stream banks to help manage our waterways. Last year, the city planted around 1,700 trees, including what was given away to community members. Of note, this year, resident commissions are coming together to recommend an updated tree planting and preservation ordinance to help the city meet its tree canopy goals. Healthy trees and an efficient waste system both contribute to resilient water resources. In human systems, the city has climate action strategies related to local food production, environmental health and safety, and building a new climate economy. You'll see that this list of strategies has the least activity, either last year or this one. The Climate Action Plan prioritizes actions based on ability to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, increase community resilience to climate change, and to improve equity. These strategies will come into play in later years, so stay tuned. So that's a snapshot of 2021 sustainability activities and a little bit about 2022. Looking ahead, I want to mention just a few other key touchpoints. One, the Climate Action Plan committed the city to conducting an Edina-wide greenhouse gas inventory every two years. The next one is due for the year 2021 and will be conducted this fall, once data sources are ready for analysis. Next, as you can see, the CAP is ambitious. Climate change is an all-hands-on-deck challenge, and starting with their 2023 work plans, staff will recommend that all Edina commissions add a climate action to those work plans. Finally, you'll hear from me one more time this year to report on the 2021 greenhouse gas inventory findings and progress on climate actions this year. As time goes on, the Climate Action Plan will be integrated into other city plans: the biannual budget, the capital improvement plan, and work plans at the department and staff level. With that, I'd like to thank the council for listening and welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Hancock. Questions from council, comments? Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you talked, now I had three things, and I've forgotten them all. The one that's most controversial, I'll start with, people have talked to me about residential real estate sale document that shows the energy use of a house. I know this is something that they've done in Minneapolis. Is that on your radar?
It is on the Environment Commission's radar. The Chair of the Environment Commission recently attended a knowledge share with commissions from other cities where they heard about what's called the time-of-sale energy disclosure. So I believe that the commission has requested a presentation from a nonprofit who has led that work in other cities to receive it here in Edina.
Terrific, thank you. The second thing is, is that you and I have talked about with our green, sustainable building policy, builders aren't familiar with the B3 or the Affordable Housing Program, and you had told me that there was kind of a delay on the training process. Can you give us an update on how we can help share the learnings that we have with our development community?
Yes, good news that your last meeting council did approve a contract with LHB Corporation, who will be our third-party engagement lead for developers, to educate and guide developers through compliance with the Sustainable Buildings Policy. So they're on board and not a moment too soon.
Okay, thank you. And then, can you make this presentation available to us? Because there was something in there that was a question, it was a little bit less, a little more technical that I could probably ask you online, but it escapes my memory right now, but it's good news, thank you so much.
Other questions? Member Rears? Sorry, Member Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just was wondering how you gauge the acceptance and growth of the organics recycling program? It seems like I'm seeing more green containers out, but that could be where I'm driving.
Yeah, you know, organics recycling coordinator Twila Singh is the expert in this topic, but I know that one of her touchstone programs is to just go talk to people, and so she's at the farmer's market every week in the summer, and then she is also available to meet with homeowners associations or condo associations to talk about recycling, organics recycling there. She does collect data through Hennepin County and through our organics recycling contractor, Muirkant, on participation rates and tonnage that's recycled.
Thank you.
Member Pierce? Nothing? You know, in a couple of the recent U.S. Conference of Mayors meetings I've been at, and I know that you helped cover some of the climate mayor's meetings for me, which I appreciate greatly, we've been told that we need to start as cities building out our charging infrastructure system for EVs, for electric vehicles. And Mitch Landrieu, the former mayor of New Orleans, who's been charged by President Biden with implementing the infrastructure bill, has told the mayors a couple of times, if you're a city, start working on your system, at least theoretically getting it built out, because the cities that have their ideas in place or their systems sketched out or planned are going to be the first cities that are going to receive funds. So get ready. And I don't know how we go about getting ready, who we hire to help us get ready, to figure out how we're going to build out our electric vehicle charging system throughout the city, but it seems to me that if we're going to try to meet our 2030 goal, this is an important thing to be thinking about in terms of increasing the number of electric vehicles in our community when you think about the fact that 40% of the problem we face is transportation-related. That's where the greenhouse gases are being produced. So any thoughts on that, on who are some of the consultants out there, the engineering firms we might be thinking about hiring for that kind of work?
I don't think I can speak to consulting firms, but I can speak to Edina's perspective on this, and we're lucky to have such good neighbors because the cities within Hennepin County are working together on an integrated EV charger deployment countywide, so that you don't have to wait to get to Edina to charge your car. You can do it in Richfield, you can do it in Minneapolis. So I'm grateful that at the county level, they have their own climate action plan, which is more or less ambitious than Edina's in different places, but that we can work across jurisdictions to ensure that this is a useful charging strategy and doesn't leave people stranded or oversaturated anywhere.
What do you think of the, in your mind, though, that you've been here with us for a couple of years? a couple of years, and you see the difficulty of getting that greenhouse gas number down? What do you see as the pathway for success on getting us to where we want to be, meet our goals for 2030? How do we do that?
I think be bold. Electrification is not something folks were talking about even a year or two ago, and here we are, Edina is participating in this electrification cohort that's nationwide to say, we've got to do something. And acknowledge the urgency publicly, understanding that last year was the driest year in 20 years, but who knows what next year holds? This year could be the wettest, next year could be something different. Climate change is here, we're already having to make trade-offs, and I think that is changing people's perspectives. But it's possible to address it, and it is possible to meet our goals. Yeah, with boldness and ambition.
I wanted to hear you say probable.
(laughing) I'll go as far as possible.
Let's have an offline conversation about how to get to probable.
Sure, yep.
Okay. Member Jackson?
So you meant, I remembered my third question, that was electrification cohort. Can you, for the laypeople listening, tell us a little bit more about what that is? Because I think it's not what people are expecting. And it's exciting, and I know what it is, but I'd rather hear it in your words, if you could, please.
Yeah, so when you think about building energy use, most of us get, turn on our lights thanks to electricity, and we heat our homes or our water or our stove, our food, using natural gas appliances. Natural gas is methane gas. It is, it lasts in the atmosphere around 10 years, so not nearly as long as carbon dioxide, but it's about 25 times more potent. And so in this critical decade, society is realizing that natural gas is not a viable energy source if we are going to keep global warming below 1.5 degrees Celsius. In Minnesota and other cold climates, there is a challenge of can electrical systems work in deeply cold places? So can they work down to minus 20? When heat pumps first, so you can, you can just buy an electric stove, it's not very efficient, and so your bills go up really high. So the next step is to use what's called heat pump technology. And it's still electric, but it recycles the heat that is generated by the electric appliance into energy itself, and so it's highly efficient. So it saves you money on your bills, it lowers that greenhouse gas impact, it also lowers home health and safety. If you turn on your natural gas stove and you don't have a hood, you're breathing in those gases. If you turn on your furnace or your water heater and it's not vented, you can, there is a risk of backdraft within your home. And so there are many reasons to move away from natural gas. In Minnesota, the ECO Act and the Natural Gas Innovation Act, which were both passed by the legislature last year, opened the doors for fuel switching. So previously, it had been legally barred from taking place, utilities couldn't promote it, rebates weren't allowed. With passage of that legislation, it provides our natural gas utilities a path to stay viable while still allowing for a transition away from gas infrastructure.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a great explanation, thank you. Anything further for Ms. Hancock? With respect to the request that you're making, allocating more funds for the audits that you're doing, is that something that we're going to see coming to us? Or is it something you want in the form of a motion now?
I think you got it. I think it came through consent.
Was it in the consent? Okay, I thought I'd seen it.
So my request is a thanks at this point.
Just looking for it coming up. Okay, good. You got it. All right, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, in the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, is a discussion with our Park and Rec Director, Perry Vedder, about the proposed Braemar Park Master Plan and amendments to it, and a special project request for the potential Braemar Ice Arena expansion. Director Vedder, thanks for being with us.
(inaudible).
Oh, thank you. Resolution 2022-49, accepting donations. Oh, bear with me a second here. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-49?
So move, second.
Member Anderson moves, Member Pierce seconds. The adoption of Resolution 2022-49, which would accept certain donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Those donations, those potential donations are shown in the resolution itself. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2022-49 say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? And this reporting period, all of the donations fit under the Park and Rec category, and a really generous donation from Edina Friends of the Library, $1,800 to Books for the Juneteenth Event on the 19th of June. Donna Hips, thank you very much, $1,050 for three crab apple trees at St. John's Park. Mike Kelly, $500 to the Braemar Memorial Fund, and Jack and Ann Rutger, $50 donation to the Braemar Memorial Fund, and their names will be on the website. And thank you to Clerk Allison for that catch. And now we'll move on to the proposed Braemar Park Master Plan amendments and the special project request for the Braemar Ice Arena expansion with our good friend Director Vedder from the Park and Rec Department. Director Vedder, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Also, thank you to the members of the community that did do those donations. It's wonderful to see those philanthropic efforts, so thank you. This evening, we have for you tonight to review some requested, proposed amendments to the Braemar Park Master Plan and the potential of a Braemar Arena expansion request. I'm going to take you through just a little bit of what the current Braemar Park Master Plan has within it, and then the proposed amendments related to some facility studies, the existing arena infrastructure and ADA improvements, and then a special project request that has come up through the community for an arena expansion. Just a quick recap for those watching. Braemar Park is the largest park in Edina. It is approximately 500 acres in size, located in the southwest portion of the community, and it's home to the Braemar Golf Course, the Golf Dome, the Arena, Sports Dome and Field, and the Courtney Fields. So just a little bit of a recap on the master plan itself. It includes three themes: there's trail investments, site improvements, and natural resource stewardship. Just a couple of quick highlights on the trail improvement plan. These were developed throughout the community. This process began in 2017, culminating with adoption by the city council in 2018. So there's a consistent theme of connectivity throughout the master plan, throughout that park, in a number of different mediums. The first is a Hillary Lane Parkway Trail. There are additional paved trails, soft surface trails. There's an off-road trail system, often called mountain biking, and some winter use trails. Couple of typical design ideas of what those could look like as you enter in the park are on the bottom of the screen. Those improvement concepts were fleshed out a little bit deeper within the master plan. There's one for just walking that connects around Courtney Fields, around the perimeter of Braemar Park, and around Hillary Lane. The mountain biking or off-road trail systems, primarily on the western edge of the park and on the eastern edge of the park. A lot of those areas were in proximity to where the golf course kind of restricted in size after its renovation and allowed a little bit additional capacity for trail systems within that. Also, one of the aspects of the plan was to increase winter use at the site, and that's the ability to expand cross-country skiing. Now, I did want to point out, because I know it was an early discussion point of the master plan, this does not include artificial snowmaking or a sledding hill. I know those were themes that started when the master plan were coming up, however, they were not adopted in the plan at that time. The next step is to go to those site improvements in a recap of around Courtney Fields. And that was to install a new playground on that site. The southwest is a little bit underserved when we looked at play equipment for youth, primarily Lewis Park, Maguire Park, but not really in this area. It's a little bit isolated from a couple of the neighborhoods. It includes upgraded lighting, batting cages, and spectator safety netting. As I indicated, a lot of trails to provide connectivity, loops within walking, and some additional seating areas, as well as upgraded field drainage and irrigation. The Braemar Golf Court site improvements includes ADA improvement provisions and the ever-popular pickleball. There's one thing that gets the phone ringing, it's pickleball expansion, and platform tennis. Again, platform tennis is primarily a winter recreational activity to increase opportunities in those off-season months. And again, no artificial snowmaking or sledding operations. Just a couple of highlights from the master plan itself, won't go into a lot of great detail, but just kind of to orientate you about Courtney Fields with the youth athletic fields, but adding in some of those other non-active features, a little bit more of the passive use, playgrounds, walking trails, also increasing seating and safety for those spectators. From that concept plan, we've also done some additional study on where and how that safety improvements could be conducted, so well positioned to implement on this plan. Just a quick snapshot of the Braemar Golf Site. Again, just to highlight, you know, there are no golf course or driving range improvements as part of this master plan, that was already conducted. This is a lot about access in addition to those passive uses of pickleball and platform tennis. The last phase of the existing plan has quite a bit of opportunity, and that's the natural resource improvements. Driving through or driving around is how one primarily uses that area now. If you drive along Hillary Lane, you can see a lot of the impacts that Ms. Hancock, who has left, talked about of adaptation to climate change. There is an area that has flooded, there is an area that has gone through severe drought within a small window of time. And you can see a lot of the trees and vegetation in that area have died. They were not prepared to go through that extreme of change. So the ability to help manage in some of these areas of oak woodlands, prairies, wetland management, a lot of the other removal of invasive species, provides a great deal of opportunity through this plan. So that's a little bit about what's in the plan now. It's a very robust plan, has a lot of opportunity for the active user, a lot of opportunity for the passive user. So now I'll talk a little bit about the requested amendments that we have for you this evening. They kind of come in three categories, but we have four requests of you. One first is just to do facility studies for our revenue needs assessment for the Golf Clubhouse and the Golf Dome. As you know, this is a little bit intertwined with the upcoming referendum. We are not asking any funding for those at this time at all as part of that referendum. We really want to kind of get a gauge on what does that facility condition look like? Where has the community expressed need that we can serve better at those sites? I know a number of you have requested in other meetings that we've had about can we provide more for seniors at the clubhouse, maybe more art programmatic senses? So really to get a handle on what those facilities can serve, and are there other areas of revenue that we might be leaving on the table or overing look as we operate in those areas? So that's kind of that first piece, is just to do a study of those two facilities. The second we'll talk about in a little bit greater detail is the Arena Complex capital infrastructure. And then the third is the special project request that has come through the Parks Commission on the expansion of Braemar Arena. So the first, as you know, the Arena Complex is, has three indoor sheets of ice and an outdoor sheet of ice currently called the Backyard Rink that operates seasonally. It is also home to two tenant partners in General Sports and the Velocity Training Academy. Many of the assets that are within Braemar Arena currently are original from the 1960s. There is a great need, it's been in the capital improvement plan for a number of years, things such as for not just the participants, not just for the staff to operate, but also for the spectators and patrons that visit us. ADA accessible seating and roadway, dashboard replacements, remodeling of locker rooms, the HVAC and heating systems, our cooling systems, kind of pretty much everything that is in there would need to be touched and looked at. Hot water for our locker rooms. Really, and also kind of a little bit timely, too, is, you know, might be a question of why put capital improvements in a master plan? I think in the sense of how vast the request is, and in connection to what opportunity that vision could have for the master plan, is to look at it a little bit differently than just a capital replacement of, we have a failing hot water heater, let's replace it with a more efficient one. This gives us the opportunity to really look holistically at that renovation to say, can we have more redundant systems if we did it as a major remodel than just a one-for-one? Can we increase our efficiency? Can we increase the sustainability component of that? So really about putting that effort into a vision and including it in the master plan. I'll show you a couple of examples of the current infrastructure on the screen now. Again, as I mentioned, a lot of these are original from the 1960s. You're seeing some of the storage and brine tanks, some of the motors that run the compressors in the, these are from the West Arena, some of the original support mechanisms that support those motors, and some of the ammonia tanks that are currently there. So that request then is to include those capital improvements on the Arena Complex into the master plan. The next piece is the special project request that came up. When the council passed a resolution supporting the local option sales tax effort, you had kind of touched on the expansion piece at that time as you sent that request to the state legislature, and you had asked for that process to come through the Parks Commission. So it goes back a little bit before that. Staff has been in conversations and discussions with members of the hockey community, primarily some of the Icaola Cup members, who really want to see a return of excellence of Braemar Arena. They put a lot of effort into their own careers, their own coaching, being a parent of a hockey, of a hockey child, and really want to see kind of, kind of both things equate each other. So we've had this conversations about what is a vision for Braemar Arena going back to 2019. I think you've heard in pretty much all of your conversations and action items that there was this little thing that got in the way called the COVID-19 pandemic, about how often we meet, where does a vision go to in that sense, and how do we resurrect that? So it did come back as part of your resolution of the state legislature to support looking at the expansion, so we brought that back. Those members came in the fall of 2021 to kind of talk to the Parks Commission about a special project request. The Parks Commission was very accepting of that information at the time, asked staff to go study it. So we went and did an expansion study, which resulted in operational analysis, and then that's where we are now before this evening with the Parks Commission recommendation and to request to the city council. So what is the special project request for the arena expansion? I'll give you a brief orientation of what's on your screen here. This actually does face true north with, on the top of the screen, you can see the soccer field, that's Braemar Field. This is a springtime photo, so the Sports Dome is not up. Directly below that is the Backyard Rink. The block on the left is where Velocity and General Sports are, that's the addition of the Hornets Nest Locker Room Expansion. The West Arena goes north-south, East Arena goes east-west, and then the South Arena goes north-south. So those are the three indoor arenas and the Backyard Rink. Under the expansion request, it's kind of a little bit of a site plan provided to the city of what this could entail, is the South Arena would be removed and replaced with two sheets of ice that go east and west. In addition to that, a number of support mechanisms would support that expansion, one being structured parking, to increase parking. I think if you've been there now, on a busy Saturday or a busy game night, you'll understand we are short parked now, especially in consumers' patterns, right? They will meet at the game rather than ride together, things of that nature. So in addition, if you have been there while there is a game and people are coming from the parking lot at the same time a practice is ending, and the queue-up of people wanting to just pick up their child, not park and come in, is a little bit of a conflict. I think every ice arena struggles with this aspect of vehicle traffic through with kids coming out. What this concept does is create a dedicated drop-off and exit, so those just picking up do not have to travel through the existing parking lot. So a huge safety improvement to the existing arena. As well as an expanded lobby, I think if you've been there, you know, that aspect of it is just that community sense of bringing in there, getting into that lobby and accessing those rinks in a better flow than what we have now is important. This is a different view of looking at, instead of a top-down, more of a bird's eye flying over, you see over, you see that circle drop-off is important to us from that safety aspect, the structured parking, as well as the two blocks in blue would be where the expansion takes place. So after that, that's kind of that site layout piece. What we also were tasked with then is looking at, how does this function from an operational analysis? This is great, we know we have a great demand. What does that mean for the arena? So we conducted an independent analysis. We had Ballard King look at this for us, and they did it in the fourth quarter of 2021 and the first quarter of 2022. They interviewed all of kind of the major stakeholders of Braemar Ice Arena, want to know what they were using now, what their unmet demands were, what they found in the arena, how was their experience occurring. Really focusing on what would change in your operations with a four-sheet of ice. We looked at that, a revenue and expense modeling, and we look at revenue, that's a demand issue, and the expense modeling is what we provide as that service. And that demand issue, what we found is, as I always say, you can never build enough ice arenas in December and January from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. If that was the only case, we would, you know, fourth arena, fifth arena, sixth arena. What we were concerned about as staff is, what does this mean for a Friday in July? What does this mean in the off-the-shoulder seasons for our operating analysis? Can it function correctly? So we had them do, after all of that, they found of all that unmet demand, they put together some operating budgets for us. And on the right side was Ballard King's base projection, that is what they put together. So there's two items of note for that projection. The first is they modeled their revenues only off of the stakeholders they interviewed. Just want to point that out. That was just kind of that core group of folks that use the arena. So there is the potential for additional revenue to come in if we can increase that market demand outside of there, which we know we can. The second, on their base projection, this was Ballard King's recommendation of the logical expenses to operate an additional four-sheet of ice. So we were comfortable with that. And we said, how about you do another one for us? Make it a little bit more conservative. What if we need additional maintenance staff? What if we need additional Zamboni drivers? How about some more expenses related to supplies? That's that conservative analysis. In both scenarios, we found out that a four-sheet of ice does not negatively impact the existing Braemar Ice Arena budget, it actually is a net positive. So what does that mean kind of from that cost recovery budget scenario piece? The item in the black is our current existing budget for 2022, that is our all-in budget including depreciation. That delta of operating expenses is covered by the Edina liquor profits. The conservative estimate, we thought, well, let's have a little bit more maintenance staff, let's make sure we cover things, is a positive to about $387,000. If we go off of Ballard King's original base estimate, that's even better, it's about a $250,000 So we look at that expansion request, you know, again, about a half a million people plus come through Braemar Arena every year. 158 counties in the state, 12 additional states, one country. It does reduce ice demand, it does not solve the issue. Some of our users say, you know, close to 40% of the ice time that they buy is outside of Braemar Arena. They're still going to be buying ice outside of that. And it also contributes positively to our arena budget. So those were the finding of that. So just to recap on some of those amendments, they kind of started this fall, 2021, when those members of the public came to the Parks Commission and asked for this. Over the winter, we studied that from an operational analysis. Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed this at their April 12 meeting, was able to ask questions and dialogue with us. Some of those clarifications we made in the staff report, additional information for them. They reviewed this on May 10th and passed a recommendation through a motion that the council review and accept these amendments to the master plan. They did have two comments, because that was only a week ago, their minutes are not officially done yet. But the first was to really put together a strategy for capital improvements and dedicate to that, so we don't get in this position again. And the second was about the facility studies, is that because these areas are revenue generating, we should really look at the facility from that sense of serving the community to make sure that the assets we have are reflected in our buildings. So they did pass that motion there. And then we are here this evening asking for your review and recommendation on these amendments. So just in recap, the Braemar Master Plan, what it does, it sets that vision for Braemar Park. It really does. Where do we want to be in the future? Who do we want to serve? How do we want to serve them in the community? The proposed amendments, they don't conflict with any of the adopted plan provisions. The master plan does not allocate funding, and it doesn't grant any land use requirements. Those pieces still need to have, still need to occur naturally. So we are asking you for your recommendations after discussion this evening for those four plan amendments, the arena infrastructure and ADA improvements, the expansion, and then the two non-referendum questions of the facility studies for the course facility and the dome facility.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Vedder. Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thanks for your hard work, Director Vedder, and thank you to your team as well. I know a lot of work went into it. The report itself is very thorough and very straightforward at the same time. So that report and analysis is extremely useful and can be read by anybody and quickly grasped, so thanks for doing that. As we come down to a point in time where we may have an opportunity to implement some of this, I think that the thing to keep in mind is, is that we currently are not in ADA compliance on our public facility. And that should be anybody's concern. That's a federal guideline, and we're out of compliance in that regard. The permafrost under the rink is a safety issue as well as a foundational issue to the whole facility. So as we look down the road, regardless of outcome of a referendum, regardless of outcome of decisions and how we implement it, those things have to be done. It isn't, it's not optional. Those are things we have to do. And as we look towards the four-sheet of ice, I really appreciate the analysis that goes into that. You know, we have, as you mentioned, half a million people coming through that facility on an annual basis. And the fourth sheet allows that to be completely utilized within the community as well as to host tournaments. And tournaments are a big issue financially with the operation of any ice hockey arena. But I think at the end of the day, the most important thing is, is that it's the hundreds of families and thousands of kids that live right here in our city that need to be served, along with other, the figure skating, the beauty league that comes up annually, all the private instruction that occurs up there, the use of the facility by breakaway, all of those things come into play. And so positioning ourselves to serve all of those constituencies better, I think, is an important consideration. And then when we look at the whole plan, and we step back and take a look at the whole Braemar Master Plan, especially with the amendments or anticipated amendments, that's so exciting, that anybody in our town can access that park for some use at any point in the year if we can complete this. So I'm hopeful, and thanks again for your hard work.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with everything Member Anderson just said. There are two things that I wanted to mention, and you actually hit one of them. We're supposed to meet this Friday. And part of that really is to talk about the CIP. And so as I walked through the arena, being an old Cargill guy, when we go back to the boiler, I can see the deterioration. And my first question was, my first statement was, it's clear, we haven't been maintaining this facility. And my understanding was, we kind of managed it as, when something broke, then we would fix it. We might try to patch it to just kind of keep it going. And what I wanted to see is a plan to think about managing this facility with ongoing regular maintenance, because it is a gem of the community. It's a wonderful regional facility with lots of services. And so I definitely want to support us really thinking about how we can start to manage and maintain this with an ongoing budget that includes regular maintenance and upkeep. So that was one. And then the second is more of a challenge. We talk about ADA a lot, and the true, the true spirit of ADA, the way it was written, really just talks about accommodation and access. And so that was great a few decades ago. But ADA really, we need to be focused on being aggressive in making sure that anybody can enjoy the Braemar parks. So it's far more about, it's far more important to be talking about more than just access and accommodating those who may need assistance. So I would like for us to really lean into, how can we be aggressive with ADA with the principle of, if anyone comes into one of our parks, and I know we're talking about Braemar, how can we ensure that anybody has the experience that we want them to have in the park system? And in order for us to do that, we kind of have to break down this idea of, we're ADA compliant if people have access to it and we accommodate. That has a limiting connotation to me. And I'd like to see us be far more aggressive in that space. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think he wanted to respond.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna, thank you, Councilmember Pierce. We have to also reiterate that the ADA sets a minimum. And I think that was the point you were trying to make. And as we look at, you know, the demographics of our community, you know, we are a little bit different than some of our surrounding neighbors. We are a little bit of an older population. As well as ADA isn't just about wheelchair, it's about all other accommodations. I think my staff laughs at me when my knee acts up and I waddle around the facility here itself. It's, I think you said it perfectly about being aggressive and how, you know, that minimum might not be good enough in all areas.
If I could, just to add to that, and I'm only mentioning this because you talked about it, there's a book by Martin Davinson that, I think the title of it is "The End of Diversity as We Know It." And what he talks about is this, one of the things he talks about is this concept that when we focus on those that are in the margin, and meaning people that in our society that have been or continue to be marginalized, when we focus on policy for those folks that are in the margin, it actually improves life for everybody. And so he gives an example, you talked about your knee, that you can't go into an ADA compliant building, if you go into an ADA compliant building today, there's ramps, right? And statistically, people in wheelchairs do not, are not the highest users of those ramps. It's the rest of us who have a bad knee, or have crutches, or we're willing furniture, or not furniture, suitcases into the airports. It's those kinds of things. But we kind of miss the mark when we limit how we think about addressing ADA, just as you said, and having that much broader view of it, I think just improves it for everyone. And so, yeah, you got exactly the point that I was making. And I would like to have us be far more aggressive in putting some of our ADA plans together.
Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was...
My apologies for jumping by you earlier. Sorry.
Well, it's just such a fascinating discussion. I'm so glad you raised that. I'm thinking, you just followed our sustainability manager, and what a nice fit this is. So the two things that she raised is the most serious problems are building efficiency and miles traveled and emissions from cars. And it looks like this is going to solve two of those things. One, a much more efficient thing. But also, hockey families drive a lot, and they drive a lot of places and get stuck in rush hour traffic trying to get down to, you know, Augsburg College or the U for practice because they can't get ice time here. So I think that we'll see a reduction in vehicle miles traveled by having more ice time here. And I think that's really exciting. So I like the environmental aspects of what you're proposing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Sutton, anything? I think my colleagues have said it so well, and you have also provided us a basis for giving a serious consideration. My thought generally is that if we're going to do this, we're going to make all these improvements, or think about making all these improvements at Braemar Park, biggest park in our community, 500-plus acres. If we're going to make, think about making these improvements at Fred Richards and turning that into something really special that can be good for our community and good regionally. If we're going to do this, let's do it the right way. Let's do it the Edina way. And that's the right way. So I'd be supportive of this as well. I thought Member Pierce raised a really fascinating issue with this access issue. It made me think about the adaptive rec program over at the golf course. You know, we're the only city, I think, at least we were, the only city that had an adaptive rec program on Monday nights for people that loved the idea of playing golf and had some challenges, whether they could do it or not, can come to our, can come to our home, our golf course, and really enjoy themselves. So think about how you expand that kind of ability for other people that say, yeah, I'd like to figure out how to take a mountain bike trail, but I want to use a three-wheeler because I got to use my, I got to use my hands. I'd like to, you know, do this or do that. I just think that for Edina, we've always been visioning about where we want our town to be in the future. Let's vision about how we want to provide for all the needs of every potential type of resident or non-resident that wants to come and use our park system. And so I thought that was just a fascinating thing by Member Pierce. Thank you for planting those seeds and pushing us ahead like we do. We always are pushing ahead in land use and thinking about how we want our town to look, and now this is another way to think about that. So with regard to what you've requested here, is a motion to amend the Braemar Park Master Plan to include the proposed Braemar Park Master Plan Amendments and the special project request, if I understand that correctly.
That is correct, Mayor.
Good. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Sutton, to amend the Braemar Park Master Plan to include the proposed Braemar Park Master Plan Amendments and the special project request. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Great work. Thank you, Director Vedder. And then we are on now to Director Teague. This is a matter we had in front of us a couple of weeks ago. It is, and we like to see this, the hospitality industry coming back around, the hotel business coming back to life. We've got one of the companies at JR Hospitality that was approved a couple of years ago and then didn't get work done because of COVID, and didn't meet the requirements under our ordinance about when you have to move on a project within the time period after which it's approved. Came back to us a couple of weeks ago, and I'm going to turn to Director Teague now, because what he's looking for is a motion to approve Resolution 2022-46, which would approve the site plan for 4931 77th Street West. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, as mentioned, the site plan for this hotel did expire. It was part of the Pentagon Village project that was approved back in 2019. The site itself has been graded, the parking lots, the curbing, everything is in place. It's basically just waiting for the hotel to be placed... is in place. It's basically just waiting for the hotel to be placed on the site. So it is code compliant with the 2019 ordinance that was established for this site. Council did hold a public hearing two weeks ago. We didn't receive any additional feedback as of last Monday. So with that, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the resolution that's in front of you for the site plan approval for the hotel.
So that's all we really need to do is sort of reapprove the site plan?
That's correct.
Yes. All right. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson, who is, Member Anderson seconds the passage of Resolution 2022-46, which would approve the site plan for 4931 77th Street West. Any further discussion? All those in favor of passage of the resolution or the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Resolution 2022-46 is approved, the site plan's approved for 4931 77th Street West. Thanks for being here. I couldn't pass that up.
I can get out of here before they change their mind. Did we vote?
We did.
All right. I got, I think I had the dust blown in my face from his shoes heading out the door. Such a fast pace. All right. We've got one matter left in front of us for action tonight, and that is Resolution 2022-43, which is a potential approval of the right-of-way easement vacation at Waterman Avenue. And Member Pierce, who's a member over at Edina, or Edina, at Interlock and Country Club, is not going to participate in the conversation. He's not going to step down and get away from the conversation due to the nature of what we're going to be doing. But he's going to abstain from the vote, as I understand it, so, and not participate in any discussion, if there is any. So back to Director Milner, our Director of Engineering, who had this matter a couple of weeks ago. And Director Milner, anything new that we need to know about?
No. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, we had the public hearing open until noon last Monday. We received no comments. And I would recommend that you approve Resolution 2022-43 that vacates the street right-of-way easement on Waterman Avenue as requested.
All right. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-43 vacating the street right-of-way easement at Waterman Avenue?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Sutton, second by Member Jackson, that we approve Resolution 2022-43, which would vacate the street right-of-way easement at Waterman Avenue. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. And that concludes our action item work this evening. And now we're going to move on to commission correspondence. I don't think we've had anything come in. Clerk Allison, we've got minutes that were attached. We've been through those. And now we're going to go to managers' comments. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. One, just to remind you that your next council meeting after tonight is a rare Thursday, even rare morning council meeting. So we have advertised it as 8:30 a.m., so we'll immediately follow the HRA meeting that morning. We think it'll be an agenda that you can accomplish in an hour. That's kind of the goal. So there will be some things that will be lining up probably behind this one for that second meeting in June. The second thing I wanted just to tell you is that I did have a chance to attend the Tax Bill Conference Committee this morning. This is where the House Tax Committee and the Senate Tax Committee come together in the same room, and they talk about what their tax bill was about, and they compare notes and answer each other's questions about different provisions. One of the provisions, couple provisions that we should keep our eye on, one is that there was a lot of questions around, there's a lot of questions around how many questions should be on the ballot, right? And Senator Nelson from Rochester, who's the chair of the Senate Tax Committee, was a strong advocate for a single question to the voters. And so there was some support for that on that side of the aisle. So that's a little different than what we have heard before, so that may be coming our way. The other piece that she was also a supporter of, and I think it might have been her idea, was that there were a number of cities that came back this year with the same projects that they had gotten previously approved last year because they needed more money, because construction costs had skyrocketed, especially in rural parts of the state. So she was authored a bill that allowed city councils who had projects approved by the legislature in 2021 but had not yet gone to their voters to increase that number by 10%. There was a cap, I think, of $3 million total per city. But there was at least the recognition that we're experiencing some construction inflation, and this was her way of doing it. Again, those two provisions are in the Senate bill. They were not in the House bill, so we'll have to see where they come out at the end of the day. And I think the end of the day will be before the end of this week. And so we will know the future of our local option sales tax referendum probably by the end of the week. And that's all I have for you. Thanks.
Great information. Thank you. Turn to council members now, and let's start with Councilmember Pierce and his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only comment I had tonight is just, I think, earlier when we were recognizing Officer Jepson, that was just a wonderful moment, I think. Just you could tell that she was genuinely excited, you know, proud, just tickled that she was getting that award. And so I think it was just really good to be a part of that. And I had, when we had the community night last year, she was the officer I was with. And so we did that, and then I did a ride-along. And so I had about halfway into the ride-along, a couple of months later, I had a pretty good sense of who she was. Because we had, we spent quite a bit of time talking about for police work, what things we could do differently. But I'll never forget, she asked me what I thought we could do to really start to make a difference in the community. And I'm positive that she thought I would give her policies that, and actions that we need to take. And I said to her, I think what we need is more Emilys to be chiefs of police. And she laughed, and she was like, come on. But I told her I was serious, because I think that this kind of work when we're serving our community, if you think about service first, regardless of what, whether you're in fire protection or law and order, you think about people first, then you always provide better service. And you could just tell that was the approach that she took. And so I was really pleased to see her get the award as the Officer of the Year. And so I was glad to be here to participate in it. So, other than that, thank you.
Thank you. Member Sutton?
Yeah, I'll just piggyback on that by saying, we heard a long list of her involvement, her special efforts. And I had an experience in Rotary where I was helping to organize junior police for a couple of years, and she was the officer who did junior police, went into the second grade classrooms, both when we got there, but also the couple of weeks before, and taught them what was going on about officers and police work, and helped fill out the coloring books and the whole deal. So she's been doing it in lots of different ways. So I'd echo Member Pierce's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
Thank you. I just wanted to, and I mentioned this actually to Director Olson on the way in earlier this evening. It's Public Works Week as well, lots of weeks this week. He, well, you know, Excel is completing their project and making street improvements all through the community right now. And they're finishing yards, they got torn up last year, and they're pulling off the barriers. And yesterday, on our street, on Fleetwood, there was a lot of dirt. I mean, they brought in a couple of truckloads of dirt in order to rebuild the lawns. It was everywhere, and, you know, people walk around, and they weren't saying much about it, but, you know, people look at it. And I noticed that this morning there was already a street sweeper working that area, right? And I just thought, man, that is one-two. That is, that's right on top of your game. And I made certain to mention that to him, because I thought it was a great job and so timely. And I think that people should recognize the effort that's made there, and that they really do try to make our city a better place to live, and they do it every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Jacks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've got a couple of things. One is, I've been asked to serve on the Hennepin County Capital Budgeting Task Force, and I want to say thank you to Corey Lukens, one of our environmental commissioners, and to Commissioner Latondres, who asked me, and Mr. Lukens recommended me. And so I'm really looking forward to serving on that. It sounds like a really awesome committee. It looks at capital spending by Hennepin County. So I'm really honored to have that opportunity. I want to thank all the volunteers who came out on May 6 to plant trees at Roslyn Park. I was a little bit late getting there. I had a vent in the morning, and I came up over the hill from the parking lot by the pool, and just the entire park was filled with volunteers. And so to Luther, and to Laura, and to Tree Trust, and to all the volunteers who helped, it was just, what a community at work. And it was, it was so exciting to see so many people out making a difference. And then on Wednesday night, we had that terrible storm. We lost some trees on Valley View Road. And I'm informed, yes, those were City of Edina trees, so more chance to plant trees. And thanks to the crews that got out right away and helped clean up our streets and make them safe again. Which sort of leads into the second thing. I just want to say a personal thank you to our Public Works Department, our Police Department, and to our EMS providers. This is a great, what an exciting evening to get to honor them and all the wonderful people who make our community safe. So I'm really thankful for that. And that's what I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things for me to cover. Segueing on the Hennepin County issue, it made me think about my conversation I had yesterday with Dave Huff, who's the county administrator. Manager Neal and I have been chatting with him about the library site, Hennepin County Library Site, which is over at 70th and York now. There was a, you know, a couple of years ago, it looked like they were going to be going over to Saltdale Mall site. That hasn't materialized. It continues to be an unviable site for them. But they, we were told, I was told yesterday that they're intending to stay on their own property at 70th and York. And so we're going to have choices. He said, how about that art center? You want to have an art center at 70th and York along with the new Hennepin County Library? And I said, well, we'll sure give it some consideration. As we think about possibilities of working with you, we're partnering with the county on that eight-acre site that they have over there. And then he's thinking about some of the things that we would probably typically think about, mixed use, and maybe some senior housing, senior affordable. And so that'll be an interesting partnership and journey coming up for all of us. Last night, they also had, over at the Ken Dragseth Auditorium at Southview Middle School, they had the Edina Reads Writing Contest. Member Jackson was over there. Turned out to be about a two-and-a-half-hour event, as kids from kindergarten through high school read, whether they were the winner, the second place, or the honorable mention, got to read either their short story or their poem. And it was really nicely done. Two of our high school students, Dadipea Guthacanda and Isabel Izzy Wagner, as she's known, handled all of the moderating and emcee work. Dadipea, if you don't know, Dadipea Guthacanda is one of two Presidential Scholars in the state of Minnesota. There's 161 on a national basis. Those are the students. That's the top award from the federal government to a student in high school, graduating seniors. So it's Dadipea, and it's a young guy from, I think, Woodbury, from the state of Minnesota, that were designated Presidential Scholars. So congratulations to her. I sent the list of all of the winners in the writing contest to Jennifer, and I'm hoping in some way, somehow, or this, maybe more appropriately, the school district, or the community foundation can get those names on a website. And so people can see the names. And the place was full last night with parents and grandparents that were really excited about their young, their young folks. The only other matter I wanted to just touch briefly on was, this morning I called and tried to reach, I wanted to get an email for the mayor of Buffalo, New York, Byron Brown, that I know and have sat next to at a couple of different events, U.S. Conference of Mayors related, and had nice conversations with him over time. I was with him a couple of years ago, sat next to him at the Yale Mayor's College. And so I left a message this morning on behalf of our community, and really the entire Upper Midwest, that was supportive of what they were going through in Buffalo. And I just wanted to let them know that Edina was thinking about Buffalo and the people there, and that we're thinking about Milwaukee, and we're thinking about Laguna Woods, California, and Houston, Texas, and Amarillo, Texas, and all these places we had mass shootings last week. So just a moment of silence for everybody, just in your own way. And I'm sure you've done this, thinking about how this could happen really anywhere. So we're fortunate that we have the good folks working for us that care about the jobs that they do as police officers and firefighters. The public safety personnel that we have in Edina are the best that are out there. And for Emily to say that all of us, all those guys in the back that she was pointing to back there that do their work with the utmost professionalism, making a difference every day, we know that, and we appreciate it. And that's all I've got for the evening as well. So is there a motion to adjourn? Or does anybody else have anything they want to comment on? Okay.
So moved.
All right. We got a motion, second to adjourn. Any further conversation or discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Who stands adjourned?